Hey, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April thirteenth. City Council Special Meeting and Budget Workshop. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address. If you join this meeting using any other link, we ask you, we encourage you to rejoin the meeting using the correct website. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@louisstonmain.gov to or during the meeting and all comments will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public who wish to make comments are encouraged to raise their hand. And councilors as well as also asked to raise your hands to make comments. With that said, the first item on the agenda is the presentation of the school department budget. And we have Superintendent Jake Langless and Chief Administrator Officer Bobby Avery with us. And with that, I'll turn this over to the superintendent.
Thank you, everyone, Mr. Mayor. Start by sharing my screen so that I can work through the slides that will guide the documents that were provided in the packet. Is everyone seeing the introduction screen?
Yeah, thank you.
I want to start by saying, imagine the opportunity. And members of the city and our voters and also our school committee have done a lot of work. But I want to just preface our conversation tonight about the budget with, just imagine when students blend mastery skills, creativity, identity and display their expression, something undeniable happens and we're well on our way to the construction of Lewis and High School expansion. And we look forward to opening that towards the end of October, early November of next school year. So tonight, I just want to go through an overview, talk about our goals and our process at the committee level. And also review revenue and expenditures that you have been provided in the packet. Some goals that we had as we worked through the process, meet the needs of our most vulnerable students, provide resources for me remediation, provide resources for social emotional learning, and something that serves all of our students all the time. And that strikes a balance of fund balance and relief funds. So from a process perspective, we landed with a $3.9 million increase or 4.41% for this presentation. Some driving factors there, and I'll discuss them further, contractual increases, increases, including a mandate of $37,500 for educators for base salary. This is a mandate from the state of Maine. Properly resourcing for language learners. This is a tough decision or it has been a tough decision for many years. And our language learners have not landed on the right side of this. So in this budget, we work to do that. And also, we have the LHS expansion, which I mentioned before, with associated costs for debt service. Back when we started this process, we landed over $15 million higher than we came in today. So I applaud the committee for the work that they've done. And also, Chief Administrative Officer Avery for all the work that she has done to help get this budget to a place where we're presenting it today. We're also looking at a multi-year approach with approximately $4 million in relief fund use for FY22. That could repeat in FY23 to help limit some of the burden on our local community. And we've started working with city staff for long-term planning around relief fund use to see what else we can do to be deliberate with those funds. As relief funds have come through, and again, we're still learning some of the rules on the latest rendition. But we were, we were able to move some items from the FY22 budget. These aren't ideal from a budget perspective, but it will help us do the work that we seek to do. And this is just a list of items that we have. We have moved to relief funds in our efforts. That's not comprehensive, but I wanted to give you at least some overarching ideas. New staff positions, including for EMS teachers, blended math position, restorative practices at the high school, store next door ed tech to support outreach to students in need. Students who would continue to access school but don't necessarily have the resources to do it the way they wish. Software printers, laptops, mobile hotspots, all those tech world things that we've had to dive so deep into because of the pandemic, much deeper than we have been in the past. Professional development. Other one-time items that we can, we can move in that direction because it qualifies. Network wiring, server room upgrades, project manager position we're looking to have so that we can properly expend funds that come into Lewis Public Schools, including grants title, but also LCIP funds that we want to make sure we're expediting and using appropriately. And then supplies books and there's been percentage reductions in other areas to help us get to a, to the target that the committee set for us. So to go through documents that you have, I'll start with the revenue and then I'll slide to the article summary detail. I should note, I'll answer any questions if they come up, but I, I can't see everyone on the screen. So if someone wants to let, would let me know that there's a question, I'd be willing to answer anything that comes up. Looking at our revenue sheet, I'm going to go from the top left and, and work my way down at some highlights. The state essential programs and services or EPS in my world, it establishes two, a few priorities, but two main things that, that go into our budget. And it establishes the different subsidy levels. So our foundation allocation, which you see the top left is $18 million, 18.5. And that's, that's actually down $144,000 or 78 cents from prior year. Noting that number, the FY22 number is 18,387,513. General purpose aid is up 2.06% at 65 million. The additional local allocation moving down below the debt service would be 1.576 million dollars. General fund carryover use of 4.52 million leaves 1.38 in the bank, if you will. This initial budget process started with using 5.9 million in carryover on expended funds. And we have since reduced that as a more responsible budgetary step. Our miscellaneous is down largely due to pandemic. You can see the different categories there miscellaneous rentals, things of that nature are down, of course, due to COVID. And our total revenue budget at 92,518,000. And that is a $3.9 million reduction or 4.41, excuse me, $3.9 million increase in revenue or 4.41%. So the general fund article summary, as we look at it, has different components and I, I wanted to share, I think the council is, is more familiar with this than maybe the general public who are watching, but the article structure is created by the state accounting requirements. We'll be presenting 11 articles, but beyond the article level, I just want to be upfront that items can land in places dictated by the article designations according to the accounting rules, but also school locations and there's other factors. So sometimes we'll hear people in the budget process say, well, where does, where is that? And we have to go look at whatever the item is, what school it may belong to and in what area to get to that level of detail. And, but this is how school funding is accounted for, but also how it goes to voters from a referendum and review perspective. And so let's, let's jump in. Article one, regular instruction is 31,458,000. And that's an 8.14% increase. These are largely due to contract increases, state mandated minimum teacher salary of 37,500, as I mentioned, and also to grow pathways for students through seven, seven through 12. And this includes things such as our language learner opportunities that we're looking to, to achieve and also work around our pathways for high school students that is actually starting now at the middle school level and longer. Article two, special education at 23,633,385. And, excuse me, that's a reduction of 1.5% and that's largely due to unfilled vacant positions. Article three, which is labeled vocational education, but really it's, it's transitioned to career and technical education. That's LRTC, Lewis and Regional Technical Center. Their budget is up slightly, 5.05% largely due to contract increases. And a bit of a highlight to share that there's a budget neutral exploration program. I think one of the things that Director Callahan has always tried to do is expand the offerings of LRTC. And this will reach down to some younger grades that students might be able to explore programming before their junior or senior year. This is budget neutral. He's found the funding for it, but something I think worth of note to share. Article four is 1.141 million. That's down to $252,000 or reduced by 18.09%. This reduction is summer school. The relief funds allow us to provide remediation and other learning enrichment opportunities due to the pandemic. And so I made the decision to move summer school into relief funds. So we don't have to pass that burden on to our taxpayers at our local level. There's also some additions and stipends and volleyball, a trainer coordinator position. And again, we're using relief funds everywhere we can here. And especially with the summer remediation efforts. In article five, we are at 6.998. And that's up some. This is student staff support. That's up 16.53%. This is up due to some new instructional technology positions as our district has gone one-to-one because of the hybrid model and the rules that we must follow from the state of Maine Department of Education and Maine CDC. We're one-to-one. And so we've added thousand computers or more and the, the infrastructure and support and software for those. So we've also added staff to support that effort. I give a kudos to our entire school team for keeping things going during this pandemic. In addition, we're moving our SEL equity coordinator to an appropriate location. And what I mean by that is that has been funded by a title allocation. And this position, the way we are looking to use it and expand SEL and equity work, it really belongs in the general fund. Also, we have restorative practices efforts, looking at having positions at the high school to support that work. And we want to measure that and see how that works to see if it is something that we want to align to other schools in an effort moving forward. And then also the use of relief funds to grow social emotional learning supports and reduce technology costs. So there's a lot of things that you don't see in this, this article summary because we're able to use relief funds to support that effort. In article six, we have system administration and this is at 2 million 30,000 and this is up 306,000 or 17.78%. And this is connected to additional positions in the business office, really a position and a half that went unfilled for a while. Adding a human resource assistant director, which an organization of this size really needs aligning district leadership to state chart of accounts in that the, the special, excuse me, the assistant superintendent was in a curriculum area and that position is more appropriately placed in system administration. So we can report our percentages correctly. And it reflects that Lewis Public Schools is at is, is 1.17% below the state average in this particular article using the latest data from 1819. In article seven, we have school administration. That's at 3.77 million dollars and that's up 78,473 or 2.13%. And that's largely up to contractual increases and some professional development. In article eight, our transportation department has done a great job. They're just over $5 million and that's down 25,000 and with a reduction of 2.65%. There's a new transportation contract that will extend out, which is a good thing to have secured. Our partners here in Lewiston have been very good partners. And our transportation, our transportation team has done a great job to improve the routes of the buses and that's, that's generated the reduced cost, even though we have a new contract. In article nine, facilities, we have 6.998 million dollars, which is down 190,000 or reduced by 2.65%. This is an area where we really had to explore how we could use relief funds for spots that were applicable to again, get to that target that our, our school committee really wanted to be at. So to give you some ideas, I just want to put a scope to it. When we talk about relief funds as it relates to operations and maintenance for our facilities, all of these locations are, are parts of Lewis and Public Schools. And you can, you can see them there listed out. I don't have to read them to you, but we're, we're, we're a big organization with a number of buildings and I think it's very important that we monitor our infrastructure. And we've started some initial conversations about how we can position relief funds within the rules to see what we can do from a facilities perspective moving forward. Article 10 is debt service. It's at 7.5 million dollars, up 11.9%. And it's a separation there between existing projects and the LHS arts wing expansion. And just as a reminder to those watching, these aren't new costs. Specifically, they are in our budget. They are important. They are costly. These were approved by prior votes that supported the different efforts. And in article 11, which is labeled as all other, we have a standing flat amount for crossing guards of $29,000. There's no change to that. That, that remains flat. So also in our budgeting process at, at this level, not on the, the expenditure summary, we also have adult education and you have those sheets in your packet. And I tried to break them down a little bit to look at areas and the, the revenue matches our expenditures, but you know, I just think it's important to emphasize the supports that adult ed provides to our entire community with education, enrichment, workforce development, helping students get their high school credential. And, and we have a number of employers that are reaching out to us on a regular basis, saying, you know, how do I get people through your program so I can hire them? I think that's good for our economy overall. Here you can see the breakdown expenditures of guidance, administration, high school completion and instruction. And the total of 808,475 or an increase of 2.65. And again, that's largely due to someone taking benefits or a couple of people. So looking at the total tax calculation, you know, Bobby and I have had conversations with Heather Hunter about these to, to ensure their accuracy, but I would always default back to her for, for final accuracy, if you will. But this budget proposes using a carryover fund balance of 4.25, excuse me, 4.52 million dollars. An additional local allocation of 1.576 million. This is a general fund increase of 78 cents from last year. The, the adult education is an exists, an existing expense. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that that was part of the equation. And this overall proposal is a dollar one on the mill rate for a total tax of 1138. FY21 was $10.37. And before we dive into too many other questions or other questions, I want to make sure that everyone knows. I'm excited about this budget. I do think it's responsible, but it provides support for our language learners. It maintains our professionals who have worked tirelessly this year. It opens new opportunities for students and our community, especially through co-creation and other platforms. It celebrates identity, creativity and expression. It targets early interventions like we've never done before. It increases instructional supplies largely using relief funds. We can really make sure our shelves are stocked. And it extends the commitment to equity and social emotional learning for all students in LPS. And I think that will benefit our community as a whole. With that, I will take any questions you may have and I'm going to stop my share if that's okay. So I can, so I can see people.
Yeah, please do. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from the council, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Superintendent Langless for that presentation. I did want to raise a couple additional points and also thank members Hawkins and Beau Parlois who are here as well as Vice Chair Damon. And I see a lot of educators in the audience as well. Thank you all for the time you're spending following up on this. I will note, it was a unanimous vote to bring this budget forward at the $1.01 rate. I had quoted just a week or two ago closer to the 78 cents that you saw, but we, the superintendent very thoughtfully wanted to show every part of the increase and every part that we contribute on the school side to the municipal budget and the mil rate. So I, I think there is nothing but transparency in this budget and I think it has been labored over in a very special and particular way at the school committee level. And I, I think it's a good budget to move forward. Hopefully we all can answer any questions you have and hopefully your counterparts on the school committee have reached out about their enthusiasm for this budget. But I'm really hopeful that we can keep it whole moving forward.
Counselor Jolinas.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to commend you and acknowledge the work that you've done to reduce, you know, by 15 million from the initial draft. So that's pretty impressive. Definitely see that. I think it's a great thing that you're able to shift so much to those relief funds. That made a big difference as well. I had a couple of specific questions. If we could go back to this article two, special education portion of the budget, Mr. Lang, I, I can see that, you know, you, you mentioned, I think, as you were going through the articles and I didn't want to interrupt you that you felt that the 1.5% difference there had something to do with not enough, you didn't have, was it a personnel issue?
We had, we had a number of vacant positions that had gone unfilled over the last few years and they move year to year, but we took, I think, an analytical look at that. We had an audit done last year that got us a step closer. And we, we reduced some unfilled positions which contributes to that reduction.
Okay. Cause I saw the, I saw that reduction also with special education transportation as well. So I was just trying to see what, you know, trying to make sense of that when you were talking that through that same trend.
Yeah, anything, so anything reduction in special transportation really is a credit to our transportation team and their efforts to reroute some things. So for example, sending two vans to a specific destination and then having a third one go to a third destination, they have found ways to root things to do one loop. So we might've gone from three vans with various drop off times to coordinating it so that it can be one. Really is a tribute to them and their effort with that reduction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jensen.
Excuse me. Yes, great presentation. Thank you. Few questions and I have a few comments. So the summer school expenses and a lot of it's covered by COVID funding. Will those expenses be added back into the budget next year?
Good question. So right now we're looking at the relief funds and following all the rules as carefully as we can. This, this use of relief funds will allow us to carry a two-year plan. And so we, if we choose in the next round of budget, if that's what makes the most sense for our community, we will be able to use relief funds in the FY23 year also. But you do bring up a concern and the reason why I think that this is a, this is a, a careful balance of, of this work is that the items that we put in relief funds, they'll come to a head at some point. And we have to be very mindful that we're not creating a cliff that's going to impact our community. But I'm also trying to not create the cliff now for, for either taxpayers or school system.
Makes sense. I mean, I'm definitely supportive of, you know, how you're using the funding. It makes a lot of sense. I, I mean, my concern is just if we want to maintain that level of programming two years down the road, at some point, we're either going to have to raise taxes or make cuts to, to fund it. I guess similar to the question, I'm kind of like Counselor Jolinas mentioned, the reduction in special education. I'm a special education teacher myself. That seemed like a pretty big reduction to me. I know when I was on the school committee, we talked about something like 20% of new incoming kindergarten or pre-K students needing some kind of special education services. So I guess, you know, so a lot of that was from unfunded positions. Is that going to have an impact on school staff and will those positions be added back into the following budget?
So these were unfilled positions that we were already working without having them. And it's gone on for a couple of years. And so part of the findings in the audit was that we, we can reduce the level of staffing in some spots. It's a very careful calculation. I included our special ed department in the conversation. And some of it is shifting in programs and also numbers of students in programs. And so as, as a bubble of students moves, they can reallocate. I, I don't think that we're going to be in a position where we can't meet the IP needs of our students.
Okay, cool. So even post-COVID, you feel like the staffing levels of what you're presenting here are going to meet what the district needs?
I mean, that's what I feel today and I've consulted with our special ed department about that.
Yeah. And I get it too, you know, I, I don't think any special education department in the country is fully funded or staffed the way it should be. Really just don't treat special education the way we should as a country. I guess it's a little bit beyond our budget cycle. All right. And next question I had is I mentioned last time about adult ed used to be revenue neutral. And I guess now it's, you know, $20,000, you know, requiring us to spend money on that. Are there plans to make it revenue neutral again?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the goal we want to work at. They have offered some new programming and have started chasing some additional funding for, for tuition and things of that nature. So I know that Director Grant, that's always his goal to be budget neutral, if not even have a surplus there. So that is the goal. I think this year we, we got tapped on the shoulder with a couple of things. One is some enrollments that do have reimbursement or down because of COVID. And also some, some staff taking benefits and being slotted appropriately created that increase.
Makes sense. All right. Okay. I think those are the questions I have. Just a few comments. I guess, I guess it's kind of a question. So like regarding the graduation rate, so a lot of people will look at Lewis's graduation rate and like every district's, every school's graduation standards are a little bit different. You can't say one high school experience is the same as another. Some high schools honestly are just easier to graduate from than others. I think if, if people truly looked at Lewis and they would realize that we actually have very high standards compared to a lot of other schools in the state. And honestly, I think they may be too high. So I guess just as a counselor who would love to see that graduation rate rise. If you in the school committee can, can put some work into maybe alternative options for seniors, more options for getting them to graduate. Just making the path, path a little bit smoother, not easier, smoother. I know people in the public are going to, you know, raise, oh, we're making it too easy for them, but they, they just, they truly don't get it. So I think we could be doing better by our students and I don't really know where to go on that. If I was still in the school committee, I would probably be, be banging the drum. That was one of the things I left that I really wish we had tackled. So for what it's worth, I, if you guys could have that discussion about maybe increasing the graduation rate substantive steps to do that. And I guess I'm also very concerned about the use of carryover funds. Cause last year you had some extra funding coming in and so you really didn't have to raise taxes and yet you guys increased spending by quite a bit. And I was worried that when it came down to this year, that we'd be in the position where we suddenly either have to raise taxes to keep spending the way we have been or to make cuts. And so again, I do feel like that's exactly what's happened this year. And I think that with the COVID relief funding, we kind of get a little extra benefit in that we're kind of kicking a lot of it down one more year. And so my use of, especially with the carryover funds, using those for, you know, things that would be recurring and recurring budgets. Using relief funding for things that should be in recurring budgets, not like one-off expenses. I'm worried that next budget cycle or even the one after that, when you don't have any more COVID relief funding to spend, it's going to hit taxpayers hard. And we're either going to have to make huge cuts in the school side of things or we're going to have to make cuts in the city side. And I really don't see much more wiggle room in the city side. And either that or raise taxes, which to me taxes are already too high in the city. It's hurting growth in the city. And so we're not in a really good spot. So I guess those, those are my concerns going forward and any school committee members watching. I hope you take that to heart. The LCIP spending is also a bit concerning to me. There's just a lot that's being asked for and voters did approve the new expansion at the high school for approving like three and a half million for the upgrades at the middle school. I'm very hesitant to, to, you know, get behind some of the other projects on there as well. To know the school committee, to me, it always felt like we're not going to be able to cover everything. The money just does not exist in the city. The state regularly underfunds us. Just the fact that we have to pay for the expansions for our buildings in the city. We have to pay for it by bonding it. So it's not just paying the cost, but it's paying the debt on that. We have to pay for it by bonding it, so it's not just paying the cost, but it's paying the debt on that. That, that's been huge. That's hit the city, like how many tens of millions have we had to pay that we haven't had in education that we've had to pay on expanding buildings, which the schools should pay for. I mean, the school, the, the state should pay for, you know, expanding populations. Also, you know, the, the paying in arrears for certain, like articles, certain, certain funding has definitely hurt the city when it has a growing population. So I think there've been a lot of issues that have hurt Lewiston financially, Lewiston schools especially, that weren't really in our control, but as a school committee member, I always thought that we do the best we can with what we have. We try to keep things at a reasonable rate. I know when I was on, I wanted to get out of the idea of just meeting the required minimum local share, and, you know, we have pushed a little bit past that. I'm happy about that, but, you know, we're not taking the approach of, of demanding our schools come with a zero, you know, increase to their expenditures. Last year, I know it was a little bit different with the extra money coming in. But we haven't consistently asked our school to come to, to us with a zero increase budget, like some other districts have. And I'll never, ever support that option. To me, I think we always should be increasing the school budget just at a reasonable rate. And so it's tough. And so I guess, when it comes to the school budget, you should probably prioritize the things you need to focus on. Like, I think staff morale in the district was a big problem for a lot of years. I mean, it has been for quite a while. I'd like to see, you know, focus on that. I think that if we can improve the quality of employment for our teaching and teaching staff, that's gonna pay dividends for the, the levels of learning that our students enjoy. So I really wanna reduce, reduce the stress load on teachers. So this budget does a lot. It doesn't feel like it's very focused on any particular areas that they wanna focus on, like especially with this budget. It seems like, okay, we list out all the things we need to work on, and we're just gonna throw a bit at everything, every little bit. It's like a Gatling gun. But I mean, like the last presentation, I, I think one member said something along the lines of, like, we've just been kicking the can down the road. And I was on the school committee for three years, I'm aware of all the problems. It was just, we, we can't actually pay for all the problems, and so we have to be targeted in our approach. Because, like, honestly, you consider the, the political ramifications, this is an election year. If we put up a budget that voters are just adamantly against and just not gonna support, and it's just not responsible, they may end up electing people that are very, very opposed to spending a lot on schools, and we on the council may get entirely replaced by people who say that the council is being reckless with our spending. And then we're replaced by people who suddenly don't wanna spend more on education and aren't gonna invest in the city the way they should. And so there are political ramifications to us putting a budget that taxpayers are just not gonna see as, as viable or respectful to them. So do I think the current budget level is where I want it to be? No, I think it's a little too high, to be honest. I'm not committing myself anyway right now. I wanna speak probably to some teachers in the district, I wanna speak with some people in the union, some more administrators here. I wanna do more research on this before I, you know, vote on it. But just my instincts from on the council and from serving on the school committee before, this doesn't feel very targeted. And it's just asking for too much, and seeing this level, I'm already thinking, okay, what cuts are we gonna have to make in the city side? And it's already very concerning, especially in my award and ward five, where we're trying to reduce crime, reduce poverty, do a lot of things. And I'm just seeing a lot of those things that we could be doing is just not gonna be feasible this year. So again, I'm, I'm certainly open to anyone reaching out to me. I love hearing perspectives. I'm gonna do my research on this too, but I'm just not there yet. Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just real quickly, I, I would actually say that we, we did have targets in this budget, and they're specific around remediation for our students who are behind, and both the pathways for students, but also our English language learners who have been underserved by, by budgets for numerous years. So when we talk about what specific focus we have with these efforts, those were, those are areas of focus that I would, I would refer it to. But I did take some notes, Counselor Jensen, and I do thank you for the feedback.
You know, I'd like to just acknowledge some of the comments that Counselor Jensen made, and I agree with them. I think our community has a high level of poverty. We, we have an overburden in property taxes currently. I mean, if you look at our numbers statewide, if we creep up to the thirty, we're gonna be pretty near the top of the state in property taxes. So when, when you have those two things, an extremely high poverty rate and a tax rate that's one of the highest in the state, we will limit our economic development, and honestly, that is the only thing that will get us to a point where we can adequately fund our schools. So I was really disappointed the last time you presented that we heard criticisms from teachers and others that we were even, even questioning the school department budget. As a city councilor for years in the current city council, this is, budget time is one of the hardest times of the year for any elected official, because we wanna provide for our students, and we wanna provide for our community in the many areas that we should be. But again, look at our demographics and our tax rate, our poverty level. There's reasons to this, because if we don't get economic development moving in our community in relatively short order, budgets of the future will be even more challenging that we're faced with now. Counselor Ray.
Thank you for allowing me to go again, but I, I have a couple of specific answers to Counselor Jensen's questions, just because I obsessively track via spreadsheet how we're voting on things. So in terms of the summer school expenses, we definitely have that discussion about, is this just gonna hit us in two years, and is a new school committee just gonna cut this entire program? Member Majoris Collins made a motion and did not receive a second for restoring that to the general fund budget. In terms of special education, again, we had a similar discussion, you know, what are these vacancies? Why do they exist in that way? And so initially, it had pulled out six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that. We added back in one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and that was voted seven to two to reinstate those folks back in. And then in terms of the graduation requirements, the current principal, Principal Blank, and his administrative team presented to us on amended graduation requirements, which partially has to do with COVID, but hopefully, as we get a new principal into the high school for next academic year, we can continue that discussion about what the state of Maine is requiring and what Lewiston is requiring, cuz there is a gap to bridge there. So I, I'm very hopeful that we can start that work in the fall and think very consciously about it. I think these are all really great questions, and I, I think my colleagues for them. It's, it is difficult for sure, and also the timing of these two budgets creates an even bigger divide, where it feels a little us first then, because the school budget has to be passed, it has to come through, the council has to go through referendum, and then it happens, whereas the city council budget is only examined by us, and so, and then we vote on it. So it, it, the, the difference in processes feels a little at odds, the difference in timing feels a little at odds. So I, I sympathize with colleagues on both sides of my work, because it, it is really hard to do, but I, I will say, you know, and I've said it before, education is economic development. That's where we build our workforce, and we hope folks stay once they graduate from LHS or LRTC, or if that isn't their path, that they become a member of our society who is employable and can then pay those taxes and property taxes. So I think that is the approach that I'm coming from, that we need a workforce here, and we, I think LRTC has done a great job with that. I think LHS has done a great job with that. And, and that work should be acknowledged. We do have a high property rate, but if, if we're offering premier education, you know, if we are meeting every student where they are, then that feels really important to consider in the scheme of the state as well.
So I would agree with everything you said about education being part of economic development, but there, it's all double-edged swords. The goal, of course, is always being a premier educator in the state. We have so many steps to go before we get there. And that's clear by the, you know, struggling graduation rates that this community has suffered over the years. We have potential, because I think we have excellent leadership, we have excellent teachers. But, but again, if we get ourselves to a point that people identify Lewiston as the highest tax community in the state, economic development will not be right around the corner. And then how do we get there? How do we get to a point that we can fund our education where it should be? Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, there's lots of folks in the audience this evening. I will allow some public comment, very brief, no longer than ten minutes, and anyone who wishes to address either the council or the school leadership should limit their comments to just one or two minutes. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council. Any final questions or comments? Okay, Superintendent Langless, Assistant Superintendent Parkett, and Chief Administrator Officer Avery. We greatly appreciate the time that you've taken to present to the council on a couple of occasions. And I would assume we'll see some of you back here on May fourth, when the council discusses and makes a final recommendation to the school committee. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time. Thank you, Bobby and Karen, if you would.
Okay, next item on the agenda is review of nonprofit requests, and I'll turn this directly over to Finance Director Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The last section we need to cover is the miscellaneous section. We've done a lot of that already related to insurances and retirement and some of the other benefits. But on, starting on page seventy-seven through seventy-eight, is that miscellaneous section. The first one is private school busing. We had an increase there of thirty-one thousand thirty, which is thirty-six point seven percent. There has been an increase in the Western Maine transit calculations as well as the number of days and the fuel usage. So all of those combined accounted for that increase. As far as non-fringe-related insurance, we did have an increase there of seventeen thousand six hundred. And the bulk of that is in the auto insurance. Our experience rating is, is rather high, so it's caused our premium to increase by fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. The dues and donations is flat. The dues cover the Maine Municipal Association and our membership to the Anders Coggin Valley Council of Governments. The donations is what the Mr. Mayor had started with tonight. The actual cash donations include ten thousand dollars for the FY twenty-two Liberty Festival. That amount was increased by fourteen hundred dollars back in two thousand seventeen. We also budget six thousand dollars in this line item for state-required cemetery flags for Memorial Day. And then we include three thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars for the Hillside Snowmobile Club, snowmobile registrations that are reimbursed by the state, which was, is six dollars and sixty-two cents per registration. We turn all a hundred percent of that over to the Snowmobile Club, so they can maintain the trails and so forth. We had additional cash requests this year. Those were sent on to council as part of workshop material for this meeting. We had the information from Jump Start Maine that is asking for five to ten thousand dollars, Community Health and Counseling Service is acting for additional four hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is a public health agency which provides diversity of mental health and emotional services for the population. Children's Center, which is a children living with special needs, has requested five hundred dollars based upon our population. Community Theater in Auburn has asked for ten thousand dollars to help them bridge the revenue graph, gap caused by COVID. And then Life Fight Foundation has requested two thousand dollars for a combination of COVID relief funds, as well as to reinstate or replenish their aircraft capital campaign. As well as, we also have nonprofit request for in-kind services. And again, a file was sent to you on the various agencies that have requested particularly, most of them encompass off-duty officers, public works, fire personnel at an overtime rate that we absorb the overtime cost for. And again, some of them include a waiver of fees as well. This year, the total in kind services totaled fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars less than last year's requests, primarily as a result of the uncertainty of when events can be rescheduled and so forth attributed to COVID. On page seventy-eight, we have the tax sharing agreement with Auburn. We have a slight decrease there. That is the tax sharing agreement in place for the Monty High Drug Facility. That requires us to pay seventeen point five percent of the taxes to Auburn. The value of that facility did decrease by three million dollars this year. So obviously, even with a higher tax rate, it produces a, a reduction in the overall reimbursement to Auburn. The salary reserve decreased by two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar, or well over three hundred percent. As we already discussed during the first workshop, most of the contracts are in place, so we don't have to assume labor negotiation costs in there. And it also includes the enterprise overhead credit for staff in the general fund doing work with the enterprise funds that they are reimbursing us for. That credit totaled three hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Then we do have a true other miscellaneous category that's found on page seventy-eight. We had an increase there of a thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. I am pleased to say we had an increase of three thou, thirty-three hundred dollars in the audit. You will be getting an, a proposed adjustment to reduce that amount now that we have the awarded five-year contract to R.H. Smith. And then municipal, miscellaneous services, sorry, decreased by two thousand dollars. That's a combination of various specialty initiatives, citywide training, recruitment efforts, and so forth. So at this juncture, we have covered all of the departments, all of the detail. I had also sent to you a packet of the parking lot items, as well as the list of combined new program and service positions and frozen positions and priority order. You received a list of vacant positions currently within the general fund, excluding frozen positions. And then because Public Works had a fair amount of new programs and services, there was a request made to prioritize those items, so you could see what initiatives the new Public Works Director wanted to put in the forefront. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure how best to go through this. We can go down the new program and, or the parking lot items. That make sense to you? And get direction from the council?
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll ask, you know, I'll ask the council. In years past, we came up with a percentage increase that would be tolerable to the council, and then we asked our city administrator to, to bring in something, you know, a budget like that. And I'm not suggesting, I'm just throwing out alternatives here. Or, you know, we can take time and whittle through the lists and have debate and discussion on that. So I just like to hear thoughts from the council, how you see best to move forward with the budget process. Counselor Ray.
So I prefer the latter option that you just proposed, walking through the list, having debate on each item and taking a straight-up-and-down vote on it after all debate has been exhausted, I think. So that's how we did it through the school committee at this point, and that way you know if something doesn't even get a second, it's not that big of a council priority. I think it, it will look at our values a little bit differently too than trying to back into a number, but that is my preference.
Okay, any other thoughts from counselors? Counselor Clement. Counselor Clement?
I have no problem with going with the former, Mr. Mayor.
Which one?
The former, that we do a percentage.
Okay.
I'm looking right now, we're just pennies below the thirty-dollar rate, and I don't see that as something that's going to, going to pass easily. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea of going through the list and seeing if there's like support even for it. And then if there's no support, then we can, you know, take those items off. And then maybe at that point, we can determine if you want to do a percentage.
All right. Thank you. Any other opinions? Counselor Patengill?
I'd be okay with looking at the percentage, especially as we're trying to get under that thirty-dollar mark.
Okay. So anyone else coming to weigh in?
I can. I like the latter too. I think we should go line item by line item and see what the council prioritizes. And so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of liked the direction that you had explained. But it gives the city manager and the treasurer an opportunity to go through that. I kind of like that idea.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jolinas, no pressure, but at this point, it's kind of a tie.
No, I was gonna say, I can go either way. I don't really care how we do it. But I wanted to know if the stuff that we talked about tonight, Director Hunter, is any of that up to be put in the parking lot?
Typically, no, that's pretty vanilla. The only, you will vote as a council when you approve the budget for in-kind services. I guess the only thing that the council may consider putting on the parking lot is the, any cash donations that you wanted to consider that were not included in the budget. Those were kind of outlined in the memo that was sent to you. That includes the Jump Start.
Yep.
That, the community health counseling, community little theater, the child center, and then Life Flight.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right, so it looks like it's kind of an equal vote, so. I mean, I'm okay with supporting working through the list. And I think as we start that process, we may change our mind and just want to get to a point where we provide a percentage. We don't have clear direction at this point, so I don't think it's appropriate to take away. So real quick, I definitely would like to see the Jump Start, Me Downtown Lewiston Request put on the parking lot, and the Life Flight Foundation, Community Health Counseling, and Children's Center. But that's my opinion. I'm sure other counselors may have their own opinion on that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, would you repeat that? You have the Children's Center, Jump Start, Life Flight, and what was the fourth one?
The Community Health Counseling Service.
Okay.
Counselor Ray?
The Jump Start, sorry. Is that at five thousand or ten thousand, Mr. Mayor?
It gets listed at five here.
Well, it's a range because if, my understanding is if the winning person or group organization did not feel that the accommodations in the I'm sorry, Dennis, what's the name of that building?
The Hartley Block.
Thank you. I just totally, if they don't find those accommodations adequate, that's where the other five thousand kicks in, that they would need to help offset rental cost if it was relocated, where the Hartley Block is donating that, if you will, as part of their funding of that potential contest.
I can say my preference would be to go with the five thousand then, because I would love to see that Hartley Block filled. But I am the counselor of that ward, so might be biased in that opinion.
Okay. Counselor Clement? You're muted.
Off now, I believe. Okay, just for clarification, you are wanting to put on the parking lot several of those items, but items such as the Liberty Festival and Community Little Theater, what was your intent with those?
So Liberty Festival has been an ongoing thing, so I think that's already within the budget. And no, I didn't wish to put Community Little Theater on the parking lot.
So in other words, you're in favor of funding them, as is, as the request goes?
Say that again?
You're in favor of funding them at the requested amount that they've put in for?
I would be actually the one, well, maybe Life Flight, I think we could whittle down a little bit. And that, I mean, I think it warrants discussion, but the Jump Start Me and Community Health Children's Center, I think, you know, what they're asking for is reasonable to consider.
Okay, I just was wondering where you stood on the other items. I would be in favor of putting everything in the parking lot, with the exception of Jump Start, but that's just me. Thank you.
Okay. So Finance Director, can you put everything? Okay, thank you. Counselor, I'm not sure who raised a hand first, but Counselor Jolinas? You're muted?
Just a quick question. Is it just, and maybe I don't remember from last year, but is it common, Director Hunter, for us to receive requests from agencies that are not from our community but from away? I understand that they serve, you know, people that reside here, but is that common for us to be getting requests from nonprofits from away?
That particular organization has routinely made requests.
I'm looking at Children's Center and I'm looking at the Community Health and Counseling Services.
Right, both of them have done that in the past. That's kind of their standard ask. They use that similar to LA Arts, they use that as leveraging for grants and so forth based upon the populations in Lewiston that they do serve.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Patengill?
Thank you. I just wanted to throw my support behind the Jump Start Me. I'm okay with funding that at the ten thousand dollar ask. I think that's gonna take off quicker than we realize. And I'm okay with the Children's Center and the Community Health asks as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands raised at this point. Director Hunter, I guess we could start working your way down the list.
So I guess, just to kind of help with the budget process, I think I would prefer to start with the position priority list first because most of those positions are also on the parking lot list. We do have a couple odd ones that were added after that, but that covers the bulk of them. I will let you know when we were doing iterations of this and slotting and re-sending this to the departments. There are two corrections, the crisis worker, that is priority number five and priority number seventeen. It says, yes, they're in the base budget. They are not in the base budget. That would have been a new program and service, so you might want to correct that on your sheet as well. So going down through there, this is the list that I know the city administrator has talked to all department heads about. And in, I know the deputy city administrator traced positions back to the city council goals, and you can see those noted along the right side. So going down through there, the caseworker, this will end up being CDBG funded, so you will see a budgetary adjustment for that position. So that's kind of the first one, that's an easy position to talk about. It will stay in the table of organization, but it will be moved over to Community Development Broth Grant Cares money.
Do we expect that CDBG will fund that for several years potentially?
I cannot opine on that at this juncture because they're using cares money. One thing, the regular CDBG entitlement program has been very cognizant of is not supplanting positions. So that's why, based upon the caseload being down prior to the pandemic, we were actually looking at not filling that position because CDBG was no longer funding that. With the pandemic, that is definitely something that we could argue. Do I think we may be able to get one more year out of that possibly? Or potentially, once we get the regulations with the recovery money, that may be another option to look at as well.
Okay, thank you.
The senior line position superintendent, that position turned over due to retirement. An acting person was placed in that position. So the savings were not reached. That position is currently filled at this time. So that is incorporated in the budget kind of as is. The third position, which was a new program and service position, is your Equity Diversity Specialist. And I know Counselor Khalid had asked to rename that. And I think I put it correct on the parking lot list, but not on here. And then the fourth position is the Recreation Programmer position. Again, that is currently in your base budget, and that's to build up the recreation program backup. The fifth position, although not directly an employee, but serves in a very similar capacity, is the Crisis Worker that the Chief of Police shared with you during that workshop. The Senior Principal Clerk is the position that is actually going to end up being a swing position. It was a position that was frozen in the auditing department, but I am looking at swinging that into treasury just from the sheer number of motor vehicle registrations that we are having. Normally, we were getting downtime in the middle of the month. We are not seeing any downtime whatsoever, and that will help with the lines. We have the Equipment Servicer position, that is the seventh position. That gives some growth opportunity within the municipal garage to hire somebody, train them, and then have them move up kind of like a feeder position for the municipal garage mechanic. The Equipment Operator, that's the frozen position. That was frozen in the current year. That impacts the ability to respond to winter operations. So that scored the eighth position. Police Officers, again, given the current vacancies and the need to go forward, that is the ninth position. That was a frozen position as well. Project Engineers, actually the next three positions, four positions, actually more than that, were all in the base budget as frozen that we are reinstating. So we have our Project Engineers based upon fund balance and project management. We have the Equipment Mechanic that need is needed for not only maintenance of the equipment, but particularly during the emergency needs for winter operations. Another Patrol Officer. The Engineering Tech Three deals with the right-of-way controls and public land management. We have the Fire Inspector that was frozen, that is directly related to the new landlord registration, rental registration program. Number fifteen on the list is the Assistant Fire Chief. I know the Fire Chief had presented during his workshop kind of his needs surrounding that position as well as the Library Director discussing the Library Technician Position. Then we have our second Crisis Worker. The theory was we'd start with one and see how it works. And then, you know, look at making it a little more robust and offering a second position. The conversion of the Assessing Treasurer position to a full-time position was ranked number eighteen. Then we have our three mechanics that ranked nineteen through twenty-one. And then the new position of a Recreation Specialist was ranked twenty-two. So I don't know if if there's consensus on the first, it's kind of hard not knowing where the final goal is for the tax rate to know kind of how far down the list. But I guess the first question is, the council, are you generally okay with how the city administration and departments had to prioritize this list and tying it to the goals?
Counselor Ray?
Thank you. I, for the most part, agree, although I have a really hard time putting in positions that are going to be difficult to fill, and there's a number of those on here. And I want to commit to bringing back those frozen positions, but if we're gonna have a hard time filling them, you know, especially municipal garage where there's multiple of those positions that are really hard to fill, like, why don't we start at the top one, call that good, instead of having four or five of them where it might be hard to fill down the line? So have an attractive position, make sure there's that opportunity for growth. But beyond that, that's a little hard. And then for Patrol Officer, was there only one? No, there's two on here, right? So if we're gonna do any, I don't, I don't know that I'd feel great about that, but I would say cut that from two to one. And then in terms, and then the things I feel really passionately about including in this budget moving forward are the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Specialist and the Police Crisis Workers.
Thank you. Counselor Jolinas?
My quick question is, if I was looking at this list and I thought, okay, I see value in these positions, and I certainly don't have any opposition to how they were prioritized, I mean, you know, best. What would, can I ask an order? If a position was cut to like a half-time position, what is it that they have to work in order to still access healthcare benefits and that sort of thing? Like, how many hours a week?
That would be twenty hours a week. They do with the new temporary worker clause, and Dale can describe that act. They would have accumulated time. It's on a significantly reduced rate, but that would be the only benefit that they would be eligible for if they were under twenty hours a week.
But at twenty, if we reduced a position to half-time just out of fiscal necessity, what you're saying is they could still access their healthcare benefit at twenty hours?
Healthcare benefits, but it would be at a fifty percent rate. So for example, if they were a part-time person and they wanted health insurance, they would have to pay fifty percent of that benefit, but they could still go after that position. I would say we have tried in some of the positions, having had a little bit of experience here for a while. We've had try, part-time positions before. It is extremely difficult to get people to work part-time. And it has very high turnover.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I think I guess a couple things. So on the Fire Inspector position, is that the only inspector position we would have if that position was filled? Or do we have a current inspector?
We have two current inspectors.
Okay. Plus, we have trucks that go out and do inspections as well?
That's correct.
And we don't have numbers yet. How many, how many the trucks do? How many the inspectors do?
All I have is the total number of inspections that I sent you earlier.
And was that from Fire or just, and I'm sorry, could you make sure that we send that out to the council to that question? I was gonna ask you that, because, but I figured, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So I'm just gonna share my thoughts. Obviously, the council has to decide, but we have twenty-two positions. You know, I think anything beyond ten, if we're looking to reduce our budget anyway. If we're looking to reduce our budget anyway. We should just try to limit the number of new positions that we add this year. So that's just my suggestion for discussion. I think ten is a good fair number. Uh, and again, I think the minister administrator, he understands, I think, a couple of our priorities. But, you know, as he works through the process, he may make some adjustments to that on priorities too. But, so I'd like to hear what the council thinks about that. Council Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I personally am leaning to supporting positions that are prioritized by department heads. Um, particularly the DEI position as well as. And instead of one crisis worker for the police department, I'm looking at a a second one. But generally though, I do support um, majority of these um, services and programs.
What was the first thing you said? The DEI or what was that?
The diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other councils have opinions? Council Ray?
So when we're saying eleven, I mean, sorry, when we're saying the top ten, we're actually saying the top eleven because number one is in CDBG. Is that right?
I can live with that. Yeah.
So we'd be going to equipment mechanics. And then, I'm just curious, do other folks have concerns about those two positions where, you know. It it says difficulty filling the open positions. I know when we talked about the school committee budget, it was like, well, what are the vacancies? Can we reduce those, that sort of thing? So I I don't wanna um. Uh, say that anyone should have that opinion, but I, does the same hold true for this budget?
City administrator, don't they?
I I can respond to that a little bit. I I certainly understand um, the point. I it did, they are difficult. Um, but I could tell you that as we weigh that, you know, and certainly looking at that, that shouldn't, you know, at least in my mind. We had to be careful to not allow that to impact our decision in terms of rankings, um, or, you know, final decisions too much. The reality is they're on this list, every twenty-two positions, all of these positions are needed. The staff and departments are stretched thin, workloads are 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 difficult to keep up with. Um, so they may be difficult to fill. Um, but we should, um, we should really. I I would ask the council to really base the decision more on the the merit of the position. And I guess the difficulty of hiring really just falls on us to, um, you know, really deliver, I guess. It it may be a challenge, but if we need it, then we gotta go through that challenge, I guess.
I appreciate that perspective. That's really helpful to weigh in.
Yeah, I know some work is, oh, I'm sorry, Council Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can agree with what the administrator just had to say, but I'll only agree with twenty-one of the positions. Priority number three, the equity and diversity specialist at ninety thousand seventy-five dollars. Is a solution looking for a problem. I cannot, will not support that. And I've had nothing but negative comments from people in my ward about that position. Uh, as far as the other positions go, we're down thirteen, fourteen uh, in the police department right now. Unless that's changed and gotten worse, uh, we can't fill those positions. So I say that the positions that are in here that we're looking to add to, do away with those. I do think crisis workers for the police department are extremely important. I would like to see those filled. Mechanics, we've had a problem getting them for how long now? Uh, we just cannot seem to fill those positions. So by putting that in there and passing that uh, increase onto the taxpayers. I mean, uh, with what we've heard from the school department tonight, a dollar one added to the, what is it, twenty-eight sixty-seven we have now? Plus whatever we're gonna come up with out of this budget, it's just unacceptable. Your finance committee met uh, last Monday. The overwhelming majority of the finance committee. Is not going to approve a huge increase in either budget. They're gonna recommend some things that are probably going to hurt, but that's the way it goes. I mean, this is, it's not an easy task. I don't uh, envy anybody that has to make these types of decisions. But looking at ninety thousand dollars for a a solution to a problem that does not even exist to me is insane. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would agree with the first ten or well, eleven on the list there. Um, but I would just swap out number eleven with the second crisis worker. I get the logic and waiting year and testing out the first one, seeing how it goes. But honestly, with with, you know, conditions in the city, I'm willing to put two up right now and try two out at once. So to me, it's a priority that I think we should fund.
Council Pat Gil.
Uh, smallest for me, uh, the requisitions and the crisis workers and that's it.
And so the the uh, one of the requisitions is that number twenty-two. Is that a priority of yours?
Yep, yep. Yeah, I think it, I think it benefits our our kids in the in the future, so.
Okay, is there a position you'd like to suggest swapping that out with in the eleven up range? Or or do you suggest adding another position to the list?
Whichever, whichever seems seems best. Um, like I said, I'm I'm not gonna support. Anything other than those positions. Um, you know, we're, it's. The the budget, it is snowballing in into a monster year after year. Um, you know, we've, we've addressed it a little bit. The, those, those positions that I mentioned to me um, are gonna help, you know, with with the short term. As we're coming out of the the pandemic, hopefully, maybe eventually. Um, so that, that's, that's where where I'm at right now.
Thank you, uh, Council Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with Counselor Pat Gil. Uh, we committed to recreation, I believe, last year. We had a very prolonged and uh, very sad meeting when we heard from people about that. We're hopefully about to come out of this pandemic. I think one of the most valuable portions of our community, our children. Have been adversely affected. They're adversely affected in that they're not going to school. I think we're going to pay a price for this over a period of years. Uh, I do believe that by hopefully, the next couple of months, we're going to see things turn around. To the point where we can open up and get people involved in activities, get them socializing again. I think we made that commitment last year and I would concur wholeheartedly that we do anything in the way of recreation. Basically, we haven't had any for a year. Let's get that up and running. The other stuff, most of this stuff, a good portion of it, we haven't been able to fill these positions anyway. Combine that with the unneeded position and uh, I think you've got an answer right there. I concur with what he has to say. I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Joy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. The last two years prior to the this year, I know we put aside the uh, the inspector. And the assistant chief, uh, and as you mentioned, uh, or maybe Dennis mentioned it. Not having these people uh, and talking to many department heads. Uh, that needed help will allow the department head to uh. Be more efficient in uh, future planning within either the department or the city. Uh, where he does not have uh, other sections uh, to worry about. Uh, so, you know, I'm gonna push for that one and and also the fire inspector. That was a position that was created based on the rental uh, community within the city. Uh, three years ago, if I remember correctly, or something like that. And it was recommended that uh, an extra fire inspector would be hired. Because the fire trucks cannot go out uh, in the wintertime. Uh, due to the water in their tanks and potential freeze up in the lines. Um, so if we're gonna increase the safety within our apartment uh, buildings. And um, two-story homes and up, uh, you know, that's important that we have that that position as well. Um, so for me, those are two concerns that I have. The other one is the mechanics for the public works department. From what I understand right now, there's two mechanics, one on first shift, one on second shift. Uh, and uh, I don't think that's right. I don't think they can get the right amount of workout. And on top of that, I really think, especially if they're working uh, single-handed. In other words, one mechanic per shift. Uh, the daytime, there may be a supervisor there, but in the evening or second shift or whatever it is, there's no supervisor. There's one person, uh, and therefore that's a safety issue as far as I'm concerned. Uh, we're talking about infrastructure, having a strong infrastructure. That's part of it right here is a strong infrastructure. It shows to the people that wanna come here, build here, work here, have businesses here. That we have an infrastructure with police, fire and public works that is worthy of Lewiston, Maine. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jalinas.
Thank you. I um, I think all these positions listed are important. And I don't think any of our department heads are making grandiose asks. I think these are all clearly very necessary. Um, but if I had to prioritize what, you know, I wanna stand behind, it would be um, absolutely the crisis workers. I think that's just paramount. Um, I agree with um, Council Joy. I think the fire inspector position is huge and should not uh, go. I I just think of just ramifications behind that are so important. I don't know how easy it'll be, but the patrol officer has been understaffed in that department for so long. And I know that's an ongoing issue, so that's the third priority for me. And my final one is really within recreation, but I I I say that not just because it benefits children. I think when we think about recreation, it's really important for us to think about. When I think about a recreation specialist, I think about it far more um, reaching than just our children. I mean, I think, um, you know, I know that we're not there yet, but we go to the, when we go to the list over here, uh, the the parking lot list. I mean, I know that the pickleball courts, for example, are low-lying fruit for a lot of people. But that's an example of like senior recreation that has gone sort of disregarded. And it's, you know, we have not necessarily made the promise that, you know, we've not necessarily followed through, I think, with some of the recreation things that we've wanted to do. And I just wanna, I say that because it's not just the kids. It's, it's our our greater population of, um, you know, community residents. So those are my areas.
Okay, thank you. Council Ray.
So I again return to that idea that we should take each thing, line item, and take an up and down vote on it. I think, again, they're all priorities, as Counselor Jalinas just really thoughtfully said. And um, you know, if if folks wanna commit to only choosing three and and put their votes behind those, that's, that's a choice they can make. But I I don't think we're providing um, entirely clear direction to to the administration. And I want to provide that to them and I want them to understand through the deliberative process, the voice of the minority. Being preserved through a voting process. So I I would really like to take this line item, by line item at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Council Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm finding this to be very, very disorganized and I don't wanna be here till midnight, so I think we should just go line through line.
Okay. All right, Director Hunter, let's go line by line.
Okay, so we're all set with the caseworker. So the first in this lot senior line person superintendent, because that's a filled position. So uh, the third position would be the um, diversity and equity and inclusion specialist.
I'd like to make a motion to include that in the budget for FY twenty-two.
But are we in a workshop? We can't do that. We can do thumbs up.
Foiled by my own love of the rules.
Yeah, so uh, it may actually be easier to use your raise hand. Option to count thumbs this time, since we have them. Okay, so we're looking at the um, equity and diversity specialist, so we have two. Okay, two votes for that. Moving on to the recreation.
Can we just hold on one second? Truly, only two people are gonna support that position. I just wanna make sure. Because I I guess I felt that there was more support there than that. Council Ray?
Thank you. I I would like to make a plea to my colleagues to support this position. I think for the first time in our city's history, well, not the first time, but in recent history. There was a mayoral ad hoc committee on diversity, equity and inclusion. That had the voices of those who have not been at this table for a very long time. If you look at our boxes right now, a lot of us look very similar to each other. And I think that perspective and that recommendation needs to be taken very seriously. Um, I kept that we're in a tough budget situation. Um, so I I I won't speak at length for everything. But I think this is so critically important as we look at the next generation of folks who are gonna become voting adults in Lewiston. As you look at that school department and you think about all the different languages that are spoken and all of the different races and ethnicities. And creeds and everything that is represented in this, in our youth. I think this is critical to support so that our city staff looks more like our population. Our city council looks more like that population as we move forward.
Okay, so go ahead, Council Jensen.
I think I, I don't know if my computer glitched, but I thought, did we skip over uh, the senior line person superintendent position?
That's the one that I said is is Phil.
Oh, it is Phil. Okay, I must have glitched then. Um, yeah, I mean, if we're on the the equity and diversity, when I highly support that position.
Okay, so we're now up to four votes. Is that kind of the, our four thumbs?
Council Jalinas.
So I was on that committee and I I support this wholeheartedly. This is not about me not supporting it. As I think about, the reason I asked about like the possibility for halftime positions is I think it's important. But I'm also trying to be fiscally responsible in terms of just being able to create a budget that works. And, you know, I I see great value in this position, absolutely. But again, when I posed that question, Director Hunter, it was really, I was actually thinking of that position. I think it's important. I think it'd be sad for it not to happen, but it's a, it's a, it's an ask amongst many others that are also very important. So it's not that I'm not behind it. I am. Um, and I guess if I had to go one way or the other, I'm gonna say I'm gonna support it. But I just wondered about that and I, you know, and I and I get, you know, that it is hard sometimes to get people part-time into situations like this. But I think there are certain positions, and this is a different world. Um, you know, I would, I would hope that maybe we could consider that as a possibility. But if I've gotta go one way or the other, I'm gonna support it, yes. I just wanted to explain where I was at there.
Okay, so we have four thumbs on that one. The next one is the recreation programmer. One, two.
You have six there.
Seven. The first crisis worker. Six there. The senior principal clerk in auditing and treasury.
Hey Heather.
Yeah.
On that last one, I tried to put my hand up. I don't know what happened, but it didn't go up.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, before we move on, just just try to make sure that we acknowledge that everybody's got their vote in, okay? Uh, Council Clement, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, is somebody uh, going to lower the hands after each one of these votes? Because it appears as though we're fighting each other perhaps to put them up or down. Does the host have that capability?
We do, yeah.
I can do that. Be too much to ask, because once the vote is taken and counted, have all hands lowered so we don't get caught in a, in a crossfire like we just did a moment ago?
Yeah, I think between the three of us, we should be able to zip them out, but I also think.
Hope so, thank you.
And I think it's important, we pause for a second just to make sure everybody's voted, okay?
We not say vote if it's not a vote.
Yeah, yes, thank you. It's an advisory vote. How is that, does that cover?
The senior principal clerk for treasury. Two, okay.
Everybody got their vote in, or advisory vote in, thank you.
The equipment servicer of municipal garage. Two votes. Our two thumbs. The equipment operator in public works. Two thumbs. The first patrol officer position. Two thumbs. The project engineer. Two. Three. Four. Okay, thank you. The equipment mechanic. One. The second patrol officer. The engineering tech three. One. The fire inspector.
So, um, yeah, that was quick. You know, I really think, we have to think about this. If you look at code, the number of code offices we have doing inspections, the number of current fire inspectors that we have. I, I just don't see how we would add another position in inspections when we true, and I know Counselor Joy argued against it, I'd rather buy a pickup truck so that on-duty firefighters can do the inspections, and it'd be a lot cheaper for us than filling a position and saying that we can't leave trucks out in the winter. If, if we can't leave fire trucks out in the wintertime, there's a problem with the system. But anyway, I'll, I'll let it go from there. Counselor Ray?
I would say that the reason why I'm putting my hand up and would encourage my colleagues to do so is because the last council undertook a long and arduous process to come to rental registration as it currently stands, and ensuring that our buildings are safe for our residents when we are fifty percent rented city feels really important to me. So I think in support of the rental registration committee's work, and now the housing committee's ongoing work, that is why I'm putting my support behind this one in case folks care to hear.
Yeah, and I would only respond, the last council also sent over many positions that were unfunded to this council. And if you think about it, we have three or four code inspectors, two fire inspectors currently. That, that's a lot of inspectors that we have, but I will let it go at this point.
So we have five in favor of that. The fire assistant chief. We have one. The library technician. We have two.
Can't raise my hand anymore.
I'm sorry?
I cannot raise my hand anymore. Won't allow me.
All right, so that would be three. The second crisis worker. Six. The shared position between assessing and treasury. The second equipment mechanic. The third equipment mechanic. The fourth equipment mechanic. And then the new program and service recreation specialist. Five on, six on that, seven, is that right? Two, four, seven? Seven on that one.
Okay, so we got through the positions, okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, there were positions that were not part of the new programs and service and frozen positions. Do we want to kind of run through those two, and then we've taken care of all the positions?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay. So the first one is the solid waste environmental educator. Any thumbs for that one? Are we missing Counselor Khalid? There we go.
I'm here.
Okay, the solid waste environmental educator, we only had one vote for that?
Oh, I'm voting for that.
Okay, that's what I thought, because you're the one that put it up. The part-time community coordinator at the rec department. So five for that one. The asset technician, which is funded by water, sewer, and stormwater, that is not a general fund position, but it will impact the water rate increase. Any thumbs for that one? Two. Labor-related, the two police promotions. Patrol officer to detective and detective to lieutenant. One vote for that. The mayor stipend increase or adjustment. We have three votes for that. The business outreach coordinator.
What department is that under?
Yeah, my guess is it's going to be an economic development position.
Sorry, I was on the wrong page.
Okay, two. And then administrative economic development director. So the only one I'm kind of confused on is Counselor Jensen, at the last meeting, you asked fifty thousand dollars to be put towards code enforcement efforts. Is that labor you were looking for or a position? What was that?
Oh, I meant a reduction, not an addition.
Okay. And are you talking labor?
Doesn't matter to me, just overall department, find fifty grand to cut, come to us.
Okay. All right, so we've done all the positions. So what I will do before we kind of move on to the other items is anything that got a four or higher vote on all positions, I will incorporate in the adjustments. Does that sound fair, so you can see how that looks for the first iteration?
Yeah. All right, so hold on one second. So it's seven thirty, we have two executive sessions to do. One of them may take some time. Do we want to call it for tonight, and when we come back on Thursday, we'll look at, what are we going to look at then if the council chooses to call it tonight?
What I would guess at that point, I would have, I, I think I want to tackle all of the capital items that you put on your list and, and anything that can be funded through fund balance.
Okay.
Kind of be my next, and then you're going to have a small pocket full of miscellaneous other items.
All right, and I think with, in city administrative, what's our agenda other than, there's nothing else on the agenda except budget talks on Thursday? All right, so I'm going to suggest that we handle our executive sessions, and on Thursday, I would assume we're going to make some really good progress. Counselors, thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, all right, I got a majority thumbs up on that. All right, thank you, Finance Director Hunter, you really slid us through that good, so we appreciate that. Thank you, Alicia, for kind of suggesting that and pushing us, we got through that, okay. Okay, so with that, I'm going to entertain. So Madam Clark, there are no votes that are expected with either of these items. Do two, do, do both motions now to go in on both of them? So we don't have to come out in between, would you be okay with that?
Um, I'm going to defer to the city administrator. My understanding is there was some discussion amongst the council to not do it that way, and to actually take individual votes before you enter each executive session.
So.
That was something that was raised. I don't know if it was the correct direction from the council, but City Clerk Montez is right, that that of not doing them back-to-back, and then coming, you know, coming back out. As if we were in person, we would come back out and take a vote and then come back in, go into the second one. So, but in terms, I think this is really a council decision in terms of how they want to handle it, I suppose.
So you, I really had time to understand you, your, your signal was really weak. So Madam Clark, you, you tell us what you want us to do, because you're kind of a.
Sure, sure. So what the city administrator was saying is that apparently some counselors had expressed some questions or concerns about doing those motions back-to-back, and what we would typically do in an in-person setting in the chambers is you would go, you would vote to go into one session, conduct that session, come out, publicly vote to go in the second session. And so I think the, the recommendation or request was to do that in this setting as well. Dale will be here to keep the video live, I guess, I'm not sure.
Okay, so that, that works for me, as long as someone will be maintaining this meeting space. The, the issue will be in the future that we may not always have that, and I don't like, I don't, I'm not sure we've been doing it correctly, where we're vote, you know, not voting, but making motions in seconds, but no vote. So, all right, so with that, executive session number one, I want to take a motion to enter into executive session, persuading to MRSA Title I, Section 405, six dash C to discuss an economic development issue of which a premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
So moved.
Second.
It moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Jensen, call the rule.
Sure, counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you all, we'll see you in the executive session.
Can I have one minute?
Yeah.
Just, do we have like a minute in between sessions?
Absolutely, yeah.
Mayor, you, you're going to leave and go to the other session, correct?
Yeah, I'm trying to, see you later, Dale, I'm not done talking to you.
Okay, it looks like we're all back. So I want to entertain, so one, let me just ask this, does anyone need a break before we go back into the second executive session? I'm getting, okay, I'm getting a couple of yeses, so five minutes. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to MRS A Title 1, Section 4056A to discuss a personnel matter.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Jelinas. Oh, and we have our clerk here, all right, call the roll please.
Your counsel from word one?
No.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
No.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to two.
Okay, so we'll see each other in five minutes, folks.